Remove all hats, turn all cell phones off please, thank you.
Thank you Sheriff, welcome everybody to the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three County Commission Meeting, as most of you know, Mayor Paul's along with Mayor Pitzik and State Representative Shaw, representing our county in Chattanooga, Governor's Conference, I wish them safe travels. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, and if you remain standing, we'll be led in prayer by Commissioner David Bell, and then in the pledge by Commissioner Bethany Miller.
Father God, we do thank you so much for the blessings of life, Lord, we know that every single good thing is a gift from you, amongst those who are living in Harlem County. Father, we ask that you be with us to Niall, give us wisdom beyond our years, help us to be good stewards with that which you've given us. Lord bless our time together, may we say and do and think in a way that honors and pleases you, we ask that in your son Jesus' name, amen.
To the way of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll go ahead and have a roll call of that.
Bell?
Here.
Bumper?
Here.
Bebury? Gillum?
Here.
Granton?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Kettlemore?
Here.
Lake?
Here.
Lanier?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Hope? Sane?
Here.
Vickers?
Here.
Wayne?
Here.
Wright?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now as a segment of our public forum, anybody came in late, anybody in the public wishes to speak, now's your time. Okay, moving on, Commissioner should have the minutes from the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three package. Not any changes to entertain a motion to approve those. Have motion second approved the minutes of the August fifteenth meeting, all in favor of that, if you don't say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed like aye? Motion carries. Also, we should have a list of notaries for September twenty twenty-three, all entertain a motion to approve those.
So I'm open for you.
Motion second to approve the notaries for September, all in favor of that, if you don't say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed like aye? Motion carries. All right, reports, county officials will start with Casey Swift.
Listen, yeah, here, uh, the only thing I had tonight that I brought in with me was the standard construction on Mount Carmel. I don't have to get approval for it or through the thing, since we awarded it to Standard, they're the only deal, and I would bring it for you guys too, if you wanted to approve us, awarded it to Standard. So, I guess what I'm asking for is whether you approve the award, Standard did bid to pay Mount Carmel Road, it's all standard money, and it's already been approved to the budget, so.
You just need our approval?
Yeah, just approval, just award to bid.
I'm going to accept this standard bid. All right, motion second to approve the bid, Casey has presented. That'll be a roll call of that.
Bell?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kettlemore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
I have one more thing, uh, the road listing presentation you guys last meet, that, uh, I think Russell D. Big Brother, the Big Ben Land was not under, it is, we went back to Seapass and researched it, it is a land that's only like one, one tenth of a mile long, so it's real short land, but it is only a third of this, so I think y'all approved it as correct map, but that still needs that road to stay on there, so, because it is, it's kind of over like a tenth of a mile, if it is anywhere. So that, all you can do, just approve of that, how do you want to do that, can we just prove that that road is that we have? So it would just be approving that road is that y'all presented last month as it is.
Yeah, I'm quick.
Yeah.
Uh, that, the part that is that road going to the old, uh,
Whalers.
Whalers, right?
It's just that it's like, it's not even, I think it's ready to take a mile, something like that, it's not.
Okay.
It's not, yeah, it is, but it just goes that first gate, because he put a gate up, denied access until sending the letter, but that was done years and years and years ago, so. That's why it needs to stay on there, because nobody ever sent a letter, and it's anyway, it's also.
Uh, I make a motion, we accept that road back on the list?
Okay.
Second. Motion second to put Big Ben Land.
But, yes, the road is essentially.
As it is.
Yeah.
All in favor of that, if you don't say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed like aye?
Casey, I got a question for you, I know you're Assistant County on the airport project, I was out there a couple weeks, a lot of great studies and a lot of activity going on, can you just give us a brief update on that?
The, I don't have to do the location, only the utilities, we're going to start Monday on the entrances, to go ahead and keep, make sure that that funding stuff stays, that'll, uh, we've got the location called in, as soon as we're okay, I'm going to work on it, I can do a few things tomorrow, I'll kind of address some of the edges, and try and pull the dirt down to make approaches to that section, I think, uh, we're still waiting on the entrance, we can do the final, um, survey on it, but I think we're going to let Andy go ahead and do his cotton out before we do that, so we can get all cotton out or stop down.
Do you have all, do you have all the materials you need on site?
I've got the B hit walls on site, I got them, uh, actually got them down at the shop, I got the pile, and we're hauling rock and land, so I'm just waiting, I'm waiting till we get done hauling the mill in one twenty-five, and as soon as we get done, we're going to do that, it should be able to finish that route.
And you're getting the building from one twenty-five?
Yes, and first to get the sense of time, if it can.
Uh, I go from twenty-five north, south.
How was it?
I know we talked about last meeting, how rough it was, is there anything?
I called the state three times already, told them about that, they keep telling me time, they don't get some after looking. That's all I'm worried.
You're right.
I have no control over it, but I can call, if you guys call me, I'm going to call the state, so.
Just had some big questions about this.
Oh, I have too, I can't get home calls on my road.
Casey, thank you for the strike, uh, gentlemen.
Yeah, they done it all with some people, from one to the other. That's, striking is not cheap, I just want you to know, that's forty-two thousand dollars that costs to strike that from one day. Man, we use state aid money, because we all have state aid, and so, I'm trying to get some of these state aid up, and use all that money, that three million dollars that we got, so I'm trying to do little things here and there to try and dress it up, give them back up to the party, that's what this Mount Carmel thing is up, that you guys voted on the night, it was not on the state aid road list, but they messed the map up on the state, and added that to the state aid road list, so I want to get used to that, to go ahead and get this room paid, so, before they decide to take off.
Wait, would you like our?
We got to, me and John, we all talked about it, we got plans to redo the road sections on one twenty-five south end, and then put it, get the state aid, using that money and pay there. If y'all have any road or any other questions about this part of state aid stuff, let me know, because I'm, we're looking to try to spend that money, three million dollars, like, two million, two point eight, I mean, so. If y'all see something in there, or people, questions about it, then I.
Thank you, Casey. Uh, thanks, I'd like to be able to record this, Stephen Graves.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, just want to update you on a few things, uh, since we've opened back up, I know we've talked tonnages and stuff, but I'd like to kind of get an idea of the amount of money that we've been bringing in. And then the, I'm sensing a little bit weary, powerful presence of this afternoon, with positive, just shot seventy-six thousand dollars, seventy-five ninety-one over one. I do not have the tonnages for you tonight, but we have to go forward with the report, and I should have it, we have, uh, next week, if you'd like to look at that, I'd be glad to have it. The other thing is, at the very end of last month, the state came down to look to see what we sell for, was looking like, where we were in the process, um, where we are right now, we're waiting for the state to send us some approval over, they approved everything verbally, uh, our engineering department, they had to submit, I think a few, maybe drawings or whatever, but anyway, the plan is, is for us to go ahead and, once they give us the okay, they said, don't do nothing till we get the letter, to take garbage, and we'll spread out over the floor of half the cell floor. Now, after that, cover it over, and then we'll be allowed to go back, and we'll finish out the transition over. Uh, that's per what the state wants us to do, so, till we get that load, though, kind of, we're prepared as far as we can be right now, and we're just waiting on that to begin, since it does, we're willing to do that.
They're doing the work.
Uh, as far as the dirt work, except Darren Grant, we're preparing.
We get monthly deals?
We all, we all, and there was a time that we didn't do anything in the summer, so they might be, look at the, uh, what we're paying out, because it was kind of time when we were thinking, we're done, this is because we were on holiday. Uh, but yeah, these, these commitments, month.
And you're keeping up?
I am, I got the book, I keep it signed. That's all we got.
I'm sorry. Any more questions for Mr. Graves? Thanks, sir. Okay, next, Commissioner Wayne, please.
Yes, I think there's an amendment included in our package that has an amendment in there to balance out the budget that's been kind of short the last couple of years, the library had to pay back thirty-five, approximately thirty-five hundred dollars to the city, because we approved the raises, but we never got it in the budget, so, anyway, if we can pass this budget amendment tonight, that's what it's supposed to be.
Any questions for Commissioner Wayne?
Yes, uh, the city of Oliver, since they pay forty-eight percent of the salaries, are they on board with this?
Yes.
So, my understanding, they owe fifteen dollars, or about the twenty dollars for the dirt.
Yes, he said he was in favor of that as well, we passed it, he would do his part.
But they had to ask them over.
I don't think so.
I thought it was a guy. That's, that's my concern, what if they say their board says no, are we going to furnish the whole bid?
He's assured me that they would pass it, so, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to trust he's going to do what he says he's going to do, I mean, I know the board has to approve it, but, uh, the way I understand it, and the way that they follow through the cracks over the years, is if one board, if one, if the county commissioner approves it, the city doesn't, it just goes dead, the same way for the other way around, if they approve it first, and we don't, it goes dead.
Listen, also, I'm sorry, also, Commissioner Wright, that's one reason, this one, we just got here, I've been talking to Commissioner Wayne about this one, the city of Oliver does the payroll checks, so we were waiting on the set amount that we need to pay our part of, because we just play a long sum, we don't do the payroll checks and that type of thing. Uh, we know the city council on your side, Chris Williams, do you have anything that you could add to that, as the council discussed that, passed anything?
Yeah, so as far as salaries, we actually passed it a lot back, probably a year ago, and we've kind of been waiting on county to pass it under, and like Commissioner Wayne said, one passes it, then we'll pass it on ours, just in the past, it passed on one side and not the other, and it's kind of left it all on the seat, so, uh, that's why Commissioner Wayne's brought this up here overnight, so we can just kind of balance everything off, and the Oliver worked it and back on track again, and this will do that.
Any more questions for Mr. Wayne? Thank you, sir. I'm everybody into that. Uh, we, yeah, we'll prove that, it's a. You haven't heard what we get? I thought he did, uh, first one time. Yeah, we're, 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 yes, sir, thank you, sir. Okay, uh, Mr. Miller, I am the committee chair.
Yes, if I can have, um, the ambulance committee come to the front, we have two awards that we would like to recognize, two employees, and I would like to also ask Director Jamie Barney to come, and, um, the recipients, they're going to have one of these, I don't know. Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner, who are, from, committee members.
Yeah, aimless committee.
So the ambulance committee met nine eleven, and we, we are giving two awards to the two employees, Austin and Renee, and the other one is Danielle Campbell, and she's not here, but we just give these, to these employees for outstanding service. You want to expand a little bit more before I explain?
Uh, so the, the reason that they ended up getting is one of the committee members friends, uh, they went out to respond to a chestband call, turned out he was having a pretty serious heart attack, so, uh, they're, basically their efforts saved his life.
So that, that person wanted to recognize these two individuals.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Miller, before we get to the budget amendments, do we have any other elected officials or committee chair, if they have anything to report, Sheriff?
Give me my letter, letter report, um, September, we have picked up, uh, three thousand three hundred forty pounds of garbage, uh, year to date since July one, it's forty-two thousand eight hundred twenty-five pounds of garbage, so that's, that's our report on there. Last month, Mr. Grant asked me to come up with another report as far as crimes that are distributed in the county, uh, I've got a monthly report on that, um, and I, I guess I'll be continuing to do that every month. Eight fifteen to nine eighteen, Hartland County Sheriff's Office has made a hundred and forty-three arrests, eighty-five reports on criminal incidents from any offense to drug offenses, twelve theft offenses, eighty burglaries, eight traffic offenses, thirteen assaults, one attempted second degree murder, two first degree murders, four recovered stolen property, and sixteen harassing and fraud bread complaints, that's my report on that.
Thank you, Sheriff, for doing that, a reason I have to share that, maybe we share that with the sort of community to be more aware of what's happening in the community, and make you be able to be more proactive, but watching out for things like hard deeds, as I was, like, talking about yesterday, of a catalytic converter, then.
Make sure they don't come by this one, so.
It's still my problem. You know, if, if we're just a little more aware of what's going on, and what part of the county is happening, and I think, I think it would help all of us, so I appreciate you doing that. No problem. Any more questions for Sheriff?
Law enforcement committee, it will have to be October fifth, at five o'clock.
Law enforcement committee meeting, October fifth, at five o'clock, nine o'clock. All right, thanks Sheriff, uh, any others? Mr. Grant? I want to mention that by since then, with Hartland County kind of, we've had two meetings on that subject, and, uh, our last meeting, we kind of finalized a few things, but, uh, to get a little bit more into it, I'd like to ask Darryl, if he would elaborate on our discussion, Sheriff, please.
Hi, uh, under Commissioner Grant's leadership, we had some guests, we had Mike Smalley and Jeff Shackle coming to talk to us about the vault that is up there, it's about that, um, we're going to unearth it in the next few weeks. Uh, Mr. Greg Vaughn has allowed us to use one of his buildings, and it's a sliding door, um, and we're going to drill, the first thing we're going to do is drill a hole in it, because there's no telling if there is stuff in there, water in there, blood in there, so we're going to ask your team whether it's clean stuff, if it is, to go through a catalog and have it for display between October sixteenth and October twenty-eighth, in this building.
The reason we're going to do that is because there's been three failures, there's other players in this.
Honey, ten in Madison County had.
There's just been failures involved, and the contents was nothing but mush, and so.
So we're going to take a look at that, and bring that to everybody, they can look at it for the two weeks leading up to the twenty-eighth, where in conjunction with Park and Festival, we are going to have, um, a bison thing today, and of that schedule, we'll be in the, on social media and paper, it could be, as soon as it is finalized, it's still being worked on, we're still looking for a few final pieces in that, but we've gotten good advice, Mike was divorced from Willer Vault, talked to us about a technology that has kept every vault they've put in dry since the mid-seventies, and the previous technology, every vault was a disaster since about the mid-seventies, and they don't know which vault we used, so we will find out.
Okay. Thank you, Darryl, Mr. Grant, for letting us.
Yes, uh, I would like to announce that the Bureau will be meeting with me on October fifth, here at the courthouse on the seventh floor, at eight thirty a.m., and it is open to the public, we are hopefully, after the findings from the TBI, issued real license to the taco factory down on what street? On sixty-four. And those meetings are open to the public.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Light, any other elected officials or? Um, I, I just have a question, and I've sat in on a meeting with, uh, with Commissioner Bell and Roger Willis, two weeks ago, I believe, and I was just wondering if anything else had come from that, or any discussion of buildings or, or whatever.
Well, I've talked to Todd a few times, we still had to have a building committee meeting, uh, after our meeting, uh, I got, finally got the numbers back on the concrete, or not, the pavement, uh, to put down, to get a, at least some kind of a budget, uh, we, we, we need to have another building committee meeting to discuss, I guess, the next steps, just so everyone knows, after the last commission meeting, I turned our attention that any project over fifty thousand dollars has to have a designer, designer specs, uh, so it, it would affect both a new, uh, a new building, as well as the renovation of the ambulance center. Uh, I did talk, I did go and talk to Greg Latchley, and he kind of laid out what he's going to do, and I think everyone made, I don't want to reiterate it, but I think everyone's probably clear on that, but after talking to Todd, and, and I get this, I've been talking to the building committee yet, but it would, it would seem that it would make sense to get a, a space planner involved in all three, uh, to, to kind of look at all three, uh, options, and determine exactly what we need, uh, to take care of the new city of County. Todd, at the quest of someone, I don't remember who, uh, talked to a financial, a financial guy, because I'm not consultant advisor for the county, not for City District. And there's a pretty big write-up that you guys may, and ladies may want to take a look at, on, uh, their recommendations on incurred debt at this particular time, uh, so, again, that's not to say anybody wants to go that direction, but they can give at least some, some, uh, their perspective on our financial staffs, uh, as well as the pending settlement of a lawsuit, uh, according to the financial guy, we probably would not even be able to get a lot to fill that settlement, at least we know where we stand, so that would affect at least one, if not two, of the options that we've got, no wonder, but at this point, we don't really have anything to, to present to the, to the commission, other than we're, we're working on it.
I know that there's been a lot of questions, and we've had a lot of talk in different directions, you know, with the election commission being a, in the EMS building, so the top there, about there's a clause between the county and the industrial board that the building, uh, election commission cannot go there without approval from the city of Oliver, and they have a clause saying that it's for EMS purposes only. I'm trying to find out, um, if carried out is a way of meeting, and those, pardon, the minutes of the industrial board, city of Oliver, and I don't know if that's true, so I'm, so I'm just speaking from what I have to say. Uh, with that being said, we can't really answer any questions, uh, in our meeting with, uh, my meeting with David Bell, Commissioner Bell, and, uh, Roger Willis, Roger did state that we're going to have to have some type of engineer or architect to do away with this number of fifty thousand, so with that being said, everybody's scared about being seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollars for an architect, or a engineer to come in, and, uh, Charles Building out, help us with it. So, being in the building, uh, industry, I got with Amber Moore, she already had a plan laid out, and this is just where we are, where I and Amber working with her as the builder, and also as a commissioner Trump to assist with this situation. So with that being said, um, I contacted a architect that's pretty much in Nashville, and we're going to have to contact that architect and get him involved to answer questions about the size of the building, the placement of the building, uh, the setbacks, the, the, uh, the planning, the state requirements, all of the questions are on the comments, this question. And, uh, I contacted Fred Martin, he is here tonight, architect Lamar Hawks from Jackson, and gave him the plans, let him look it over, uh, we wouldn't even know how much an architect would charge, he did look these over, and he is given the price of twenty-five thousand dollars, even with the whole project, which is unheard of, because most of his projects would run a hundred thousand plus for an architect or engineer, so, uh, he's been on the side, several sides looking, and hopefully he can be a great assistance to the commission, if they so choose to vote to bring him in in the future after the building meeting. Mark is here tonight, the commissioner has a question for him. Any commissioners got a question, Mr. Paul? Ms. Amber, do you have?
Guys, uh, Commissioner Bell, what did you say about a space planner?
We just thought, typically, a designer, if they're going to put together a proposal, they will have someone come in and actually sit down with you, and maybe the election commission, to find out the measurements of the units, find out all the particulars, so that the space that is provided for will actually meet the needs. Last thing I wanted to, it doesn't need to be oversized, but yet it doesn't need to be undersized either, if you're going to build something, it needs to be adequate, uh, for our current needs, as well as, as some growth, uh, so that's what a planner does, is they just, that's what they, 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 they're able to sit down and figure out what you need.
Well, I thought that's kind of what we already did, as far as, it doesn't have the title to it, but when we later found out, I thought that's kind of what we did, as far as how the number of people are put in a room, and, and all that stuff, that's.
Well, this, this is Mark here, I mean, uh, what, what, you wouldn't want, an architect wouldn't want to stand behind something that, that they don't feel comfortable would actually meet the needs, so they would do an investigation. So they would do an investigation, that's what a planner, I mean, I'm talking, speaking fairly loosely, dealing with architecture for the past 40 years, but they want to make sure that if they present something to the county, that it's gonna actually meet the needs. The last thing they want to do is build a building, us fund it, and then come find out there's not enough room for this, this is way too big, that's way too small. And that's what a planner does, is they just help. It's like, almost like the time to society, they may be on staff, but then they also may just have a consultant, they may do that themselves, it just depends on the firm. That's just to make sure that they, that what you build is gonna actually do the job.
Mr. Hawks said, when we talk and I told you, is that something that you help with or handle, or is it? I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to ask because we're now, next month, like this one year, and it's just kind of getting a little nerve wracking for what I've got to take here in a few months. And it's just, I mean, I, and I'm not saying I'm the best, sure, but I mean, a job I've done for eight, 10 years is I try and play speed with stuff. I hope I know a little bit about what I'm doing, but if it takes another person being hired to come in, then maybe that's what it means, I don't know. But like, sit down, just pray and patiently wait with it. And I do have a lot of concern because right now that I have no room, you know, absolutely no room.
Mr. Hawks, is there anything you'd like to share since you came down?
Can I share something with her real quick?
So when is our next meeting, home this?
I have not, I, my last meeting was with Greg to see what he could do, and that was this past week. And I've not set up, you have to give us weeks notice, and I haven't done that. Going this night is coming up, I kind of want to see what should be out here.
That's the things he stressed most with me, Commissioner Butler, is for that primary presidential election in 24.
So what, six months?
Yes.
So we try to be able to find an architect.
Make a decision. There's been several options given out to us that we haven't seen figures on or haven't moved on, but it's kind of still in the stages, if you will, of moving forward.
You hit a point there, that's exactly why we need to get an architect involved, so we know these part figures are not just kicking, we've been kicking around the figures for a year. And until we get an architect involved, when we get involved, which we have now, Amber's been working apart, we've got firm figures we can work with, we've got a firm plan we can work with, and we've got a plan that the state will approve that we must have.
Amber, you'd like to be involved in?
Well, I mean, you get to build, I haven't moved in a week. I mean, the thing about it is, like I said, the first election for next year, early bud starts February 14.
Trying to build a building or make one. We're gonna just run away to the meeting and be in trouble.
What is the date of that election, Miss Amber?
Early bud starts February 14.
Is it possible if we start it tomorrow to get that bill done, get everything done? If you did it, is it possible to have it done by February 14?
Do they have a contract?
Well, that's what I'm saying though. If they have a contract.
Do I need to come up?
Please.
What they provided is a drawing and what they reply based on the equipment, everything they use, how they function, general action time. And what I've done is taken that, like David was saying, is planner, architect, and developed that into a building drawing that has, that meets code and functions. And it's within square footages, a big deposit. With right contractor, this old building can be built very quickly. Slab on grade, two or six exterior walls, pretty familiar, pre-engineered dresses. I've worked with different companies, Nashville and New York, done industrial buildings where we build a building, the nation construction company does, and they can square big with a six ton tonneau. So this old building, I've tried to build, this building can be built in six months. And that's another reason we need to have an architect involved, because if we're, we're gonna have to bid this out with contractors. And being a contractor, we all like to have a set of plans that we all did from to meet with. So that's another reason we gotta have.
And specs.
And specs.
That's one of, we've got a huge area to call, so everybody did that.
That's right. And that's what an architect. And we're gonna have to have one if it goes to the EMS or to a new building, a dollar over $50,000, we'll have that architect. And obviously Mark has looked the plans over that were commissioned by Mark Floyd, if you remember that conversation back a while ago. And he took those, sat down with Amber, talked with her about her needs, and he has developed a, it's not a final set of plans, but a pretty close.
I mean, we keep saying EMS. I'll clarify, I don't think we're gonna move in there. We had voted on that, Bishop, I think everybody agrees, we're not moving in the EMS. Might not need to talk about that tonight, but once we get these plans going, we'll build it there. So the next one, going.
Yeah, well, discussion was, Amber, when we discussed about being out by the Agri Center building to the right bit, but after having an architect come down, the first thing he did, he surveyed the area and the parking lot right across from the Agri Center, that was around the parking lot, which by the way, I was informed that that parking lot, the money has been appropriated a year or two ago, no more than a year ago, it was under Mayor's saying, the money has been appropriated, we'll pay for that parking lot already. So, but with that being said, Mr. Hawks surveyed the area and noticed that parking lot about the grade and the placement, and I think Amber contacted Christie, Dr. Smith, and she said she would be good with that building there as long as the education board loaded forward also, she said she didn't see any problems. So we have a prime spot that has water, it has sewer, it has electric, and it has gas already in play. So with him just coming down here and looking at that, he probably saved us over a hundred thousand dollars by not putting it in the wrong place. But that's the way an architect can do it.
Chairman, you have your question done? So Commissioner Grant, I thank you for all the work that you've done, but I think that it's the committee that needs to recommend to us and get to work. I would personally like to have a recommendation by the next meeting, whether we're gonna, I don't care if we're on tempo two, wherever we're gonna go, I would like for the committee to meet and find an architect, I don't know who, whoever the committee selects to have a recommendation for us, so that we can move forward. I think Ms. Amber is very frustrated, and so maybe some of the other commissioners are frustrated, but.
I agree with you. The committee says we have, folks, the real design has not been the easiest process.
Well, we had that in mind, you agree with her.
Yeah, I think you need to make a.
I mean, if you go to Greg Vaughn's building, if you look at all the flat, there's no parking. We're using Calvin's parking lot.
Well, there's.
There's no parking for Calvin. If Calvin wanted to put a stop to this parking on his lot, there is no parking for just the employees at it. If you look at what we own, what Greg owns, what Calvin owns, we're trespassing on Calvin's lane during elections, during anything. He could put a stop on it tomorrow and we will not have a place at that election.
Well, we're gonna have. We managed to have a laser for, how long, within 14 years?
I'm just saying.
And so it is not, I mean, I understand what you're saying. Not disagreeing with the fact that it's not our property, but there's a huge parking lot right there, so parking.
He owns it. We don't own it. Greg don't own it, Calvin owns. If Calvin wants to put a stop to it, we don't have anywhere to park.
Can't argue that point, but thus far Calvin has not stopped it.
But he didn't know anything.
Be surprised that he.
I'm just saying, I'm saying the fact that we, there's not enough parking on that piece of ground.
So how have we managed to have a laser for the last 14, 15 years? That's impossible. We couldn't have people that good.
I'm just stating the fact.
Well, I'm just stating the fact that we.
You may not really realize today, but they came over next year.
And, and, and John, I, I'm just trying to present what I would like to do is to present three options to the commission and let the commission decide.
And we need, we can have, we don't need to sit every time we come up here for hour or two and never get anyone.
Well.
We've been month after month after month. I appreciate.
I would be more than happy. You'd be, you'd be. Our contestants wanted the, the, you know, the building committee please?
Yeah, I mean, we hadn't got any.
I, I agree. I, and.
I'm like Amber, I mean, we've been kicking this can around. It's about time.
Yep. Honestly, I thought we had several solutions, but each time that kind of got mixed, which is fine. I mean, this is not a one man show and that's why we haven't committed. So, but when that happens, then we're back to square one again. We thought we were gonna put it out for bid and then we got mixed on that. That wasn't anybody's fault other than the state has a law that we didn't want to break. So that, that, that put us back again on the other one. From my standpoint, if we're looking at all the options, one of the options, whether you like it, you don't like it, don't vote for it, but one of the options is to stay where we're at. And Greg has said that he would renovate the building. Well, he should, he has done what he has.
That's fine. I'm like, I don't know if you like.
That's fine. Yes, I'm not saying that you should. All I'm saying is that is an option. If you look, have you read this report from, from our financial people? Well, they're saying we should not borrow money, period. I mean, we're like $20 million is that. So at least until after the suit is settled, and then we kind of have a better idea. So it may be that building, as much as that was the easiest way out, may not be the best way out for the county. Because our responsibility is to weigh the, we already be good stewards. We're supposed to weigh the benefits versus the, the, the costs, you know? Again, I'm not saying what you should vote for, I'm just saying from my standpoint, I was hoping that we could present three options. As it turns out, it would be a zero or very low initial investment for the county, a modern investment for the county, and a bigger investment for the county. And then let the commission know, that's what I was hoping to do. But so far, we just get roadblocks.
Commissioner Grant, I'd like to make a point that this commission, and that was in the last commission meeting, that we had two options, not three options. The third option was taken off the table, left staying where we are. The two options that we discussed in past time was the EMS building and building a new building. Is that correct on that, we have evidence? There was two options that we decided to find and took the third option out, stayed where we are.
Ms. Amber, I have a question, what's, with this time constraint and the road, what's worst case scenario if we're?
If I am there in February, voters should expect no more than two, three people to vote at a time. And I want everybody to please understand this, I wish it was different. Well, you're going to be voting on paper. You're gonna be voting in a presidential preference primary. People are gonna be doing something new, first of all. And no matter whether you're young, middle aged, or old, it's gonna be new, it's gonna be slow, and voters are gonna be upset, very upset, because the line is gonna be long and very long waiting. And I, and there's nothing I can do. I have nowhere to put them because I don't even have a place to store all the equipment right now. And the worst thing is, I don't have protection for the ballots. And if anybody watches the news and knows what happened in 2020, the problem with that states are still fighting in lawsuits, is that the question about what happened with the ballots, I cannot protect the ballot for a minute, bottom line. I cannot do that. I mean, I think I, if, if, if the bottom line is this, is what I understand, you know you've got to have an architect to come up with anything to give y'all some kind of insight of direction to go, it seems like to me. And this is just me because of y'all, I know y'all hope on, get the architect in place so that they can say, this is what it's gotta be, or this is, this is your own turn here, or this is how it can go, I don't know. I mean, if the architect's support got had because of the state law, because of $50,000, you know you gotta do it regardless. I mean, yet architects got to put in place regardless. And anybody that knows, and I do know this, it's been stated about architects, they face their rating on their drawings and stuff, on how much a square foot building is gonna be, because they're gonna say, for instance, if it's a 4,000 square foot building, oh, our rate's $200 square foot to build, or higher. And then what they're gonna do is, but their part is gonna be 8 to 10% weight taken for an architect drawing. So that's why it's so high. So even with this, if he's agreeing, if he's wanting to do it for $25,000, that's already a bargain. So, I mean, I, I'm just, you know, the voters start to blame him. I mean, I'll take the heat for it and I'll take the heat for it. But I mean, it is what it is.
Commissioner Grant, I'd like to simplify this and just make a statement. This commission cannot make a decision without putting this out for bid to consider the numbers to come back.
And that was gonna be my comment, Commissioner, whether we renovate it or build it or anything, it's gotta be whatever.
Exactly.
And that's why we have talked to firms. Have anybody else have a architect in mind? Let's go.
I know that Todd has talked to A2A2, I think he's of wherever he's at.
Todd's in Chattanooga. Todd, where Todd is?
Yeah, we're out here.
He's in Chattanooga.
Nashville. I know that he's talked to them, but you and I.
He did talk to them and he related to me that their plans would be about $75,000 to take on the job. That's what he related to me.
I, I don't know, tomorrow I can tell us. Do, does typically, does this actually get hired?
Based on county, county, and front of the state, most likely has to.
So we would need to advertise in order to hire you and then get your number. That's kind of what I thought.
But that, that research decision comes from y'all's side.
Got you. Okay.
But we know how that is.
That's a good question, Commissioner Ray, I was asking if you can ask this thing, even on the architect side, does that have to be put out?
I know a number, a number of municipal, municipal do, but it may be county, it may be, I, I, I don't know. Last one we'll move to.
Personally, I've never been involved where any business is put out for an architect. I'll give that to the position on the council of municipal or county.
There are sections for a professional service like architect or intern.
Right.
I can get the specifics on that.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else for Mr. Hawkes?
Thank you, sir.
Just hear the guy. I appreciate that prayer, I appreciate that prayer, Commissioner Bell. I haven't seen that in twenty years. Someplace where they take the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Any other elected officials or committee chairs have any business to talk?
All right, good.
Get back.
I'd like to, uh, recognize Sheriff Doolin and his department. And some of you all, or maybe all of you all do know that we had a tragedy, uh, in Whiteville on September the fifth. And, you know, I, I was in present, and my good friend, Cully, uh, Cory, of the capital right there in our community, and I just want to recognize, you know, you always hear sheriff department, police is not doing this, not doing their job, but I just want to tell them in person that their prominence to that tragedy was just outspoken in the way they handled the situation. And you can't stop tragedy, but I, I, I want to tell you personally, I really truly appreciate it and how you control and the investigator, Perry, how y'all control the, the traffic. Because you didn't want another tragedy on top of another tragedy, but y'all did an outstanding job, and my hands go out to you. Regardless of what happened, we didn't want to see that happen, but I just want to tell you personally, y'all did an outstanding job. Because sheriff department always get bad feedback all the time about what they're not doing and what they should have done. But you all did an outstanding job with the TBI.
Well, thank you, and we did take care of White, you know, the sheriff's office is the county. And White was in the position where they did not have an investigator. Uh, so we were asked to go and help, and did. Uh, we asked the TBI to assist, but they did, and everything looked very smooth. And I hate the tragedy happens, but it's what you do when you get there.
Thank you, Mr. Leng. Okay, moving on to the budget amendments. I chose not to have a budget committee meeting, the majority of these had to go through the board commission, because of the funds, all the balance. Most of these are set as planned, so we can go through them. If you've got any questions, we can take them all at once. Uh, starting with number one, dental health program. Uh, debiting other health welfare, one hundred and twelve thousand two hundred. Debiting personnel, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars, for a total of one hundred and thirteen thousand forty-eight dollars. Uh, crediting social security, eight seventy-eight, state retirement, ninety-nine, employee insurance, two thousand three fifty-two. Unemployment insurance, one eighty, employer Medicare, nine thirty-two, travel, four hundred. Liability insurance, four hundred, and fund balance, one hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and seven four eight. Debiting credit balance of one hundred and thirteen thousand forty-eight dollars, and you see the reason? This is to recognize the one twelve two hundred revenue from the state and allocate a management expenditure per state guidelines, because it is funded by the state. Any questions on that? Uh, number two, buildings, debiting fund balance, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Uh, crediting maintenance and repair of buildings, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And this is to recognize the one hundred and forty-two thousand insurance recovery from flood damage and move one hundred and thirty-seven thousand to debit expense line for file recovery. That's just balancing that out, any questions on that? Uh, number three, miscellaneous, debiting fund balance, one hundred and forty-five thousand. Crediting judgments, one hundred and forty-five thousand. And this is the EMS lawsuit settlement. And the reason it is the one forty-five, the twenty-five thousand to be paid by the insurance, she will recognize when we receive. Uh, number four, sheriff's department, debiting the reserve account, three hundred. Crediting miscellaneous account, fifty-four one ten dash five ninety-nine, SXFOD, three hundred. And that's moving money from a reserve account to the sex offender miscellaneous account. Uh, number five, county clerk's office, debiting, uh, reserve account, circuit clerk, two thousand dollars. Crediting office equipment, two thousand dollars. That's also moving money from a reserve account that can be used for automation. Uh, number six, chancery, debiting one thousand one ten from the reserve account, chancery. Crediting data processing equipment, one thousand one ten. Again, that's moving money from a reserve account that can be spent on that. Uh, disregard number seven, that is a duplicate of number five, man clerk, make note of that.
I've, I've got a question on that too, sorry, is it, is it circuit?
I just noticed that, yeah, it's possibly county clerk, so.
County clerk.
Yeah, I asked Ms. Lidda about that one, it was, it was duplicated, all the account numbers matched, and the debit grade matches. Oh, it's supposed to, the correction, it should be.
County clerk, on the reserve account.
Oh, yes. Yep, note that correction on the account name, Commissioner, reserve account. The county clerk, instead of circuit clerk. Okay, number eight, miscellaneous, debiting forty-eight ninety-nine, thirty-seven thousand seven hundred. Crediting data processing, eleven thousand seven hundred, and liability insurance, twenty-six thousand. And, uh, the reason to recognize a thirty-eight thousand dollar insurance refund and allocate to correct expense accounts. So this is just using the insurance money. Uh, number nine, mayor's office. Uh, go down with debiting other charges, a thousand seventy-seven dollars. Crediting part-time employee, a thousand, social security, sixty-two dollars, employer Medicare, fifteen dollars for a debit credit balance of one thousand seventy-seven. Uh, reason to move money from other charges to pay a portion of every increase to commission fee charges. Number ten, sheriff's department slash circuit court. Uh, debiting restricted fund, thirty-four five twenty, twenty-five thousand sixty-four dollars. And debiting restricted fund, thirty-four five twenty-five, twelve thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. Crediting communication equipment, uh, one of those is under the sheriff's department, twelve thousand five thirty-three. And under, um, circuit court, twenty-five thousand oh sixty-four. And that's to move money from restricted accounts for repairs and upgrades to phone systems that both the sheriff's department and the circuit court will use. What's restricted funds moving around. Uh, number eleven, trustee's office, debiting part-time personnel, one thousand nine hundred twenty-eight. Crediting debities, one thousand seven thirty-four, and state retirement, one ninety-four. Uh, reason to provide debit with a performance increase for fiscal year. And that is a line item transfer within that form. Uh, number twelve is the library, this is the one that Commissioner Wayne spoke of. Uh, debiting fund balance, fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Crediting other contracted services, fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And the reason that's to bring in two full-time, our county library employees at the current levels or full-time employees and provide direct increase to twenty dollars per hour. Bring to their current level of funding to a hundred and four thousand seven forty-seven. So, yes, Commissioner, right, that's, that's all involved. And that amount came from the city of Ball, that we're going to pay our board to contract services. Uh, number thirteen, the sheriff's office drug fund, debiting overtime, one thousand, crediting towing, one thousand. Uh, that's line transfer movement, a thousand overtime and towing for towing cities vehicles. And then if you, Prendergast's office, number fourteen, may not have been in there, but it's there tonight. Uh, civil defense, debiting communications, a hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. And crediting maintenance vehicle, a hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. And that's moving funds for repair damage to twenty-three seventy, twenty-five. Any questions on any of those amendments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I made the motion to, uh. Okay, second.
Okay.
I'm just gonna say with the original change along to, uh, the circuit court on number seven, which you should have been. No option.
So you had a motion, Mr. Wayne?
I do, yes.
Mr. Leng said. I would propose to second to approve the, uh, budget amendments with the correction, whoever, roll call, vote for it, man clerk.
Bell?
Yes, sir.
Puffer?
Yes, sir.
Gillum?
Yes, sir.
Brether?
Yes, sir.
Hansley?
Yes, sir.
Jenkins?
Yes, sir.
Kettlemore?
Yes, sir.
Lake?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Motion, thanks, thanks. Uh, Commissioners, there were about four things in our packet that just for information. Uh, one is update on our revenues and expenditures, just as far as view. Uh, one was a letter from the comptroller's office of the treasury. Uh, one was history that Jim Pierce provided on suburbs only, that's just for our information. And then the, uh, the schedule of borrowed money that Commissioner Bell referred to, that's all for review. Uh, we do have two matters of business that we need to act on. And I spoke with, uh, Mr. DeBerg, and I don't have a hard cap this week, but the planning commission discussed this, took no action. I also spoke to Mr. Pierce, but basically the city branch junction is disbanded there, zoning commissioner, planning commission. And it'll, it'll be up to the county to handle that, since they're not gonna have a backbone. And to not read all that, hopefully you looked over it, um.
I'll just make a motion, when we set aside this for thirty days, at the next meeting, we'll find out more about this.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to set this aside for the next meeting. All in favor, they'll be done, we'll say a no.
Aye.
Other like that?
Okay. Man clerk, this will be brought up at the next meeting.
Okay, Representative Shaw had something, but he is at the governor's conference. Uh, next on the agenda, lawsuit, negative of any claims, Mr. Congressman.
The last two, uh, solo cases, they're resolved, Piccolo and, and the plan is industry case of a couple terms. It's not costing county anything, and they resolved those two cases, and they'll be a little bit.
Second. Any, any questions for our county attorney tonight?
There's another case, Jonathan Joy filed, it's been, been by the insurance company, but the judge dismissed it last week, I think, last week, the week before.
September, what?
September one. Wait for the next one.
The federal labor lawsuit is still ongoing for when?
October forty-third.
And then on our announcement, it says committees and appointments will be coming up in our October meeting. Next commission meeting is October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. And if they're not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to say, I made a correction on the site that I made earlier. I stated that there are only two buildings, uh, being considered for the elected commission. I misspoke on that, uh, the site that they're in right now is still being considered. The one that I was talking about was the venue, I don't know how we, so I'd just like to correct that, sir.
Second. I will entertain a motion. Hello, Mr. Chair.